Okay, it is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Hingham Select Board to order. And first, I will read the preliminary announcement. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording this meeting? Don't see anyone. So we will proceed to the first item of business, which is to consider approval of the minutes of July 20, 2021. I have reviewed and I'm prepared to move forward. Listen, Bill?
I'm ready.
Yes.
And I should have also noted for the record that Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself are the three members of the Select Board participating this evening. So with that, I'll accept the motion on the minutes.
And make him approve the minutes dated July 20th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we do a roll call. Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a contract with E. Watson Excavating, Inc. for site work related to the new maintenance facility project at the South Shore Country Club. I understand Kevin Whalen, Kathy Riley are here to walk us through this. So I will turn this over to Kevin and Kathy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. The, we put up, went out to bid, as you remember, we came before the board and said that this is the project for the maintenance building. We were going to split the project into two sections. One section being the site work and then the section, second section, being the actual building of the maintenance building at the country club. So we put the, the work out to bid. We had some very good news. We had an estimate of 857, I believe was the estimate, and we got prices of 637.
Let's see, I'm trying to. Yeah, 637.9.
Yeah, 637.9 was the S. So we, $200,000 was under the estimate. So that's good news. I think our strategy as far as hoping that the market will calm down a little bit is working as well as lumber prices have continued to fall. Maybe not as much as we hope, but they're still falling as well. There will be a shortfall for the maintenance building at this point in time for the completion of it, of about $400,000. That's the, we have awarded obviously the project manager, the design services, and now the site work. The construction, the estimate will be about $1,607,000. And we had an appropriation from town meeting of $2,200,000. So the estimates are coming in about $400,000 higher. And we will be before the board to request additional capacity to borrow to complete the project for, of the maintenance building in the spring. And that will be fully funded by the, by the revenues at the country club.
Can you talk about the timing of payments? In other words, I understand the total value of this contract, but when does money go out the door?
So we are looking to start pretty much immediately. One of the reasons why is because there is, you know, a lot of work that we have to do that the, you know, from the, going through the conservation process. And we want to make sure that we're able to get the grass seeds sprayed by October 1st, so we have good, healthy growth in the fall. So we're looking to get going probably in the middle of August, and it probably will be completed, this portion of the project will be completed by probably mid-November. And so money will be going out the door very quickly, Joe.
Thank you. Liz Klein, any questions about this?
Yes, Kevin, if you don't mind just clarifying, kind of leading or following what Joe was saying. So the project manager, the $24,000, that contract I know has been signed. Has that already been paid?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
And, and the design services have already been paid for, right?
So a portion of that, not all of that has been paid as.
Okay. Okay.
So the Phase 2 and 3 contracts, so we, what we did was on the design, on the project manager portion of it, the, we negotiated with the help of the town engineer, the first phase, and then they were coming back after the Phase 2 and 3. And they, and we estimate that will be around $60,000, that $57,000 number.
Right.
And the reason why we have not executed the Phase 2 and 3 is that we also wanted to include the portion of their work that they'll be doing on the pool design project to incorporate all that. So we won't have to come back for a third, another contract. So we want to try to incorporate Phase 2 and 3 of the maintenance building, and then also the pool design work that the project manager will complete.
Okay. Okay, great. And what is the timeline for that?
I'm hoping to get that done very shortly, probably within a month or so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill? My only question is, have we worked with this company before in town? Do you know, Kevin?
We have, I don't believe Hingham, they've done work in the Town of Hingham. But they have checked their references. They actually, because their bid was significantly lower than the other bidders, they went back to them and asked them to make sure that they checked their numbers, that they were comfortable with them. They did that. They, they reviewed all the, our estimators' unit prices and came back and said that they were good to go. Our project manager did do, did vet all their referrals, and they have actually done a significant amount of work with several of the referrals that they gave, and they all came back with glowing reviews of the company.
Great, thank you.
Am I correct that they've been in business for, I think, 18 years?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, and it sounds like you are satisfied that they are both qualified as well as reliable for purposes of this project.
Absolutely, Joe. And actually, there's a couple of members of the golf, at the golf course, that have used them extensively on a lot of their development projects as well that I referred to outside of, you know, what our project manager did.
Yep. And am I correct that part of this contract includes a, an insurance provision?
Yes.
General liability, professional liability, errors and omissions, things like that? Okay. Any members of the public have comments or questions about this? I am not seeing any. So I'll accept the motion. Oh, before I do, I'm sorry. Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I did not. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, great. Okay, now I am prepared to accept the motion on this.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator or assistant town administrator to sign the contract with E. Watson Excavating, Inc. for site work related to the new maintenance facility project at the South Shore Country Club in an amount not to exceed $637,900.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We come to a vote. Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher.
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And Kevin and Kathy, thank you. Kathy, don't go too far. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the contract with Comstar for ambulance billing services effective August 1, 2021 through July 30, 2024. So I understand we've got Chief Murphy here, as well as Kathy Riley, who can discuss this.
Yep. I worked with, it actually is under the accountant's office. She sort of is in charge of the contract, although the fire department, Steve and Lou, were really, you know, reviewed the terms of it and are intimately involved with, you know, the relationship, I think, of the. So this is the collections of the ambulance funds through people's insurance or direct pay if they need to, that sort of thing. And we went out to bid. We did, only got one bid. And this bid, Comstar, has been our contractor. So there was one difference in the, in the terms that we put in the contract, in the solicitation, and that was for them to cover the cost of software, the software license for the ambulance software. Is that correct, Steve? Would I?
Yeah, it's actually, they do their reports on. So we call it ambulance reporting software. And there, previously that had been covered by IT. And it was actually suggested by Comstar that many other municipalities are kind of lumping everything through so that it's coming out of, you know, the collections and all that stuff. So that was the only change that we made to the contract.
And so I suspect as a result of that, our, the way that the pricing was, was put out to bid was it would be what percentage the company takes off of collections. And so in the past, it had, the last contract, it had been 3%. And this new bid is 3.25%. And I would attribute that to the software, I would guess.
Yes. I was told directly by the representative that that was the change.
Yep. So there really isn't much different than what we've been working. And I think, you know, everyone's been happy with their work. So recommend that you approve it.
In, in terms of the, the payment, which is a 3.25%, what does that translate to in dollars if we look at the revenue that's coming in?
So typically, it's a little over $1 million in revenue per year. Some years it's been as high as about 3.2, or I'm sorry, 1.2 million. So, you know, 3% of that previously, now the 3.25%. So it's, it's a decent portion. What this basically does is they are responsible for everything to do with the collections. So they are the ones that actually submit the, you know, the, so basically, the way it works is our ambulance staff does the ambulance report, and then they get, are submitted electronically to Comstar. And then Comstar will bill the insurance company. They will sometimes contact the hospital if they need additional information, whatever the case. They set up payment plans as appropriate, whatever. And as you know, many people have multiple insurance, you know, companies, and they process that. So this is very standard. There's a, you know, the only ambulance services that I knew that do not do this are either very larger companies may bill on their own or very, very small ambulance services, even municipalities that are not doing the volume we are. Because this would involve hiring full-time personnel to manage this and everything else. So this is standard in, you know, this industry to use a billing company.
Yep. So just someone check my math. So 3.25% on a million bucks, is that $32,500?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's approximately the magnitude that we're talking about.
Yep.
And so this company, we've been working with. Steve, are you satisfied with their performance to date?
Yes. So Sue Nickerson and I actually discussed this today. And we don't even know how long we've been using them. I guess that it's been at least 12 years, because that's when we started using electronic computer records. Sue actually thinks it's at least 15, if not more. And they are excellent to deal with. They have very, very good customer service. We, you know, they actually provide training for us, for our staff, on various topics. They will hire attorneys to make sure that, you know, what we're doing is correct and we're getting all of the signatures as necessary, whatever the case. They also assist us when we have other things, such as Medicare, because we actually will get audited by Medicare, I believe it is now every five years. And Comstar works with us on those. So yes, we're very happy with them.
Do you know if they need to be HIPAA compliant, and if so, are they?
Yes. They are HIPAA compliant, and yes, they, they are required for that. So, and like I said, actually, one of the seminars that I went to that they hosted was by a EMS specialist attorney that they brought in from New York City, and it was specifically only about HIPAA. It was a six-day class, not a lot of fun. I'm sorry, not six days, six-hour class, not a lot of fun.
I'm sure. And do we, or do, does the town accountant or someone else do any sort of outside audit of their work to make sure that what is being billed is being properly reported?
That would probably be a question for Sue. I know that we get monthly reports back from them and also annual, annual reports and everything else. But I, that would be a Sue question, unfortunately.
Okay. Bill Ramsey, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Chief, did you say that last year the ambulance service brought in $1 million?
Yeah, Michelle, do you know the exact amount? I know I reported it in the town report, and I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I don't have the exact amount off the top of my head, but I think what we forecast every year right now is around 1.4 million.
Wow, that's a big part of our budget.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Liz Klein, any questions or comments?
Just a quick question about the, the fee structure, the 3.25%. Have we always paid that way, or was there a flat fee? Or is it always the percentage or combination?
Since I've been involved with this, it's always been that way. And I've actually spoke, so when, typically when there are fire chiefs conventions or anything else, there's usually a number of representatives from the Comstar and their competitors. And I've actually spoken with a couple of them. And I think the reason that we don't get anyone else that bids on our thing is no one else can really match what Comstar is offering us. And I think that's partly because of the fact that, you know, Hingham has a better collection rate than some other municipalities. So I think Comstar is willing to go a little bit lower. But I've also spoken with other chiefs, and they've kind of confirmed the same thing, that, you know, the three, and the previous 3%, now the 3.25% is an excellent rate.
Okay, great.
From their list of references, I think you guys got a copy of it. It was, they have about 200 municipalities in Massachusetts, I think, that they work for, so.
And they actually, I know that they do other services in all throughout New England. Because when I've been to some of their classes, I've talked to people from Maine, Connecticut, whatever the case, so.
Great, great. And I'm assuming there's no minimum or maximum, it's just always the 3.25?
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Chief, do you know what our collection rate is? You had to ask that.
I can, I can tell you, in the, in the old contract, it was, we asked for at least 70%, which I thought was low. So I talked to Sue, and we bumped it up to 90, and they agreed to it. So at least 90%.
That's my guess, is it's, it's around 90%.
Yep.
Right.
Great.
Okay. Any members of the public have questions on this item? I do not see any, so I will take a motion on this.
I'd make a motion to authorize a town administrator or assistant town administrator to sign the contract with Comstar for ambulance billing services effective August 1, 2021 through July 30, 2024.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We now vote. Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Liz Klein.
Aye.
Joe Fisher.
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you. And Chief Murphy, really, I appreciate your, your report this evening.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a contract with Turf Products Corporation for a Grounds Master 4010D T4 mower and accessories for the Public Works Department. Is Randy Sylvester on here?
Yep.
Randy, join via phone if he can press star 6 to unmute himself. Hopefully, he can join us.
Oh, there we go.
Hello?
Randy?
Yes.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. And Kathy is here to back you up. We're going to discuss the, the Turf Products Corp. contract for a Grounds Master.
Yeah.
You can walk us through that, please.
Well, I have no, not on my paperwork, but we're replacing a 2006 Grounds Master 410, I'm sorry, 4000P with a, with a brand-new 2022 410D, a newer model to cut fields.
Yeah, there, there are pictures of this that were included in our packet.
Yeah.
And there are two pictures. One looks like a new vehicle. Another looks like one that's not so new. Is this the before and after shots?
Those, those pictures were taken, I take photos of the vehicles and equipment going into capital outlay. So those are the, the pictures of the vehicle, of the piece of equipment going into capital outlay. It's actually 2006. It needs a great deal of work. They don't really give us a trade-in for it when it is this old. And we're hoping to get a new one. Has been approved by the Capitol Committee, and it's in my capital budget.
Yep. Is there, how do we judge the reasonableness of the, of the payment amount, which is the $84,300?
So it's on state contract. I believe it's, I don't know the number. I don't have it with me. But it is off state contract. Then we go through the dealer, for state contract, and they give us that number. The cost.
I can tell you from having been in charge of the state contracts in my previous position that almost always, the Massachusetts state contracts beat the cooperatives that are either local ones or others because of the volume, the volume of potential business and actual business that they do. Because not only do the executive branch have to use them, but all municipalities use them, schools, any kind of public entity. So they have a lot of volume purchasing power. And I'll, even from my work in Hingham so far, the things that I've had to compare pricing from state contracts versus, say, Plymouth County Cooperative, the state contract wins. So they just, I think, you know, the advantage is, is they have that much volume that they're, the vendors are willing to give good pricing.
Great. What is the delivery schedule for this?
I don't know, because we haven't ordered it yet. We haven't had approval.
But is there a date by which you need it so that we make sure that we're satisfying your department's concerns?
It will be done this year.
Let me just, so the contract is providing for, providing it no later than March 31, 2022, is what's in the agreement.
And that's an estimate based on knowing that a lot of parts and things, for mechanical things are, you know, are slowing down from COVID. So I just, I just put that in there as a placeholder, really. Hopefully, like Randy said, it'll be here this year.
Okay. And am I correct that payment not, does not go out prior to our receiving this item?
Correct.
Great. Liz Klein, any questions?
No questions. I know Randy mentioned this, but just to confirm that this was part of the FY '22 capital budget. So this is not an additional request. No questions.
Bill Ramsey.
Yeah, Randy, you said we're replacing a 2006 machine, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we get, so we get a lot of mileage out of these, out of these machines, huh?
Yes, we do. We mow all the school fields.
Yep.
The town hall, whatnot, plus all the other fields for recreation. They're out every day.
Randy, and I know obviously this is timely, given the fact that, you know, we've kind of implemented the new field maintenance plan. And I know that you guys are doing a lot of good work with cutting grass, particularly with all this rain we've been having. So I think this is a pretty timely purchase. Just, just real briefly, how is that going? I know your, your department's been doing a lot of the grass cutting. It's going all right?
It's going okay. We're still catching up with all the rain. Grass is, everything is growing like unbelievable.
Yeah.
With this rain. And we're just playing catch-up. We're just about getting there now.
Great. Well, thanks for what you're doing, Randy. Appreciate it.
Any member of the public have a question or comment on this item? Seeing none, I will accept a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator or assistant town administrator to sign the agreement with Turf Products Corp. for a 2022 Grounds Master 4010D T4 mower and accessories in an amount not to exceed $84,328.44.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We now vote. Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher.
Aye.
It is approved. Randy, thank you very much. But you can't go yet. So next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a contract with Gordon Chevrolet DBA Colonial Municipal Group for a Chevrolet 14K GVW dump truck for the Public Works Department. So can, yep, go ahead.
So this is a one ton that we use on a daily basis for trash within the town, town hall and the beaches and whatnot downtown. And it's also used in the winter for plowing. It does come with a plow. They're used on a, like I said, a daily basis, and they're, this one is getting kind of beat. And we basically keep them over the amount we're supposed to. It gets deferred every year. I believe this is deferred by two years right now. But then they start breaking down, and it's a maintenance cost. And the beds rust out and whatnot, so this is up this time, and hopefully we got it.
So picking up on Bill's prior question, what is this replacing? It looks like I'm just looking at your memo. It's replacing a 2012?
Yes.
And what happens to that vehicle? To that dump truck?
That dump truck will be either traded in for value, or it would be given to another department in town. Depending on the need.
Okay.
And the cost.
Do you have any sense of what it's worth?
I don't at this point in time. We have to have the company come and take a look at it.
And I note on this one, unlike the prior contract, it's required to be delivered no later than 16 weeks from date of factory order.
Yes.
Though, it sounds like you're able to negotiate a delivery date here.
And that was what they proposed, because it's a 2022, so they have to do a factory order, and that's how long it's been taking.
Yep. Okay. And again, Kathy, just in terms of the price, the $72,600, I assume again, it's because it's through the Massachusetts statewide contract that you find this price to be highly competitive?
Yes. Yeah, we actually did get them lower than the previous quote that we had from another cooperative by like $900. So it was the cheapest price that we could find.
Great. Liz Klein, any questions on this?
I thought I saw a replacement value for the, like, the, the truck that we were trading in, or was that for something else?
That was for the street sweeper.
Okay. All right, no questions. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
I have no questions.
Any member of the public have questions? Seeing none, I will take a motion on this.
I'd make a motion to authorize a town administrator or assistant town administrator to sign the contract with Gordon Chevrolet doing business as Colonial Municipal Group for 2021, regular cab and chassis, four-by-four, 60, 60 and CA, 14,000 GVW Silverado in an amount not to exceed $72,619.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We now vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. It is approved. Thank you. Randy, you're, you're really high on our list today. We go to the next one, which is to consider approval of a contract with CN Wood Enviro LLC for an Elgin Pelican NP Dual Street Sweeper for the Public Works Department. Did I pronounce that right? Is it Elgin or Elgin or?
Elgin.
Elgin, Elgin Pelican NP Dual Street Sweeper. So please tell us about this.
So the street, street sweeper, I believe it's a two thousand and six. We've, usually it's, it's like a seven-year turnaround on this. And again, we have taken and babied it and we do get a good warranty of, of at least five years on it. It's starting to break down and it's costly with the parts. And it's, it's time to trade this in and we do get a pretty good trade-in value. I think it's fifteen thousand or twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five, yep.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
So is this the vehicle that we see at the end of the July Fourth Parade coming down the street?
It is one of them, yes. We have two in our, in our fleet.
Okay, Liz Klein, any, any questions on this?
Just out of curiosity, Randy, did we look at the, the hybrid electric version?
We did not. We are not required to do so. We have a good relationship with Elgin and CN Wood. So we did not look at the, the electric model.
Okay.
Do we know what the price difference is?
I do not know.
Bill Ramsey? And I'm sorry, Liz, do you have any other questions?
No other questions. I mean, I don't know if that's something that should be part of our process to at least explore. Like, you know, I, I don't know if it's a huge difference in, in terms of budget, but that may be something we want to look at in the future.
Yep, I mean, Liz, you're right. As, as we go forward, this and many aspects of our town government are going to be looked at closely just to make sure that we are being sensitive to environmental concerns. Exactly. Bill Ramsey?
No, I would just agree with that sentiment. Going forward, we should look at the different options and compare, compare the prices.
Any member of the public? Any questions on this item? Hearing none, I will accept a motion on this.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator or assistant town administrator to sign the contract with CN Wood Enviro LLC for a twenty twenty-one Elgin Pelican NP Dual Street Sweeper in an amount not to exceed two hundred, twenty-five thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
We come to vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. It is approved. Randy, I think you're now off the hook. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I am too.
Thanks, Kathy.
Kathy, you're, you're never off the hook. Next on our agenda is to consider appointments. And I believe there are two items that we're going to consider this evening. One, I think, is an oversight. When we did reappointments, we did not include the current chair of the zoning board of appeals to be reappointed, which should have happened. So I would accept a motion on reappointing Robin McGuire.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Robin McGuire to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We now vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Thank you. And Michelle, we'll make sure that that letter goes out. And then we, I think, are prepared to consider an appointment to the Fourth of July Parade Committee. Is there someone who would like to make that nomination?
I'll make that one as well. So I, I, I'd make a motion to appoint Carlton Al Chambers to the Fourth of July Parade Committee for a one-year term ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We now vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. That appointment is also confirmed. Thank you. Moving on to hear public comments on items not on the agenda, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments on items not on our agenda this evening? Hearing none. We'll now move on to the town administrator reports. Michelle?
Thank you. I have two updates for the board tonight. The first is COVID nineteen. So as of today, thirteen new COVID nineteen cases have been reported in Hingham during the month of July. We're also, we're keeping an eye on the troubling uptick in cases that have been reported at the state and national levels over the last few weeks. As of last week, sixty-nine percent of Hingham residents are fully vaccinated compared to sixty-four percent statewide. And if you look at only the vaccine eligible individuals in town, which means people aged twelve and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents in Hingham rises to eighty-one percent, which is pretty good. Questions about the COVID nineteen report? Before I move on.
Are there any questions on the COVID nineteen report? Lizard Bill?
No questions. Thank you for doing that, Michelle, looking at the eligible. I think, I think it'll be important and interesting to look at the different demographics, especially as we move towards the school year.
Yes. Bill?
Comment, it's, see, I was watching the nightly news tonight and the CDC is now revising guidance on masks for vaccinated individuals. So unfortunately, we're not out of the woods yet on this, on this pandemic.
Yes, unfortunately, there is an uptick going on.
Michelle? Second report is a green communities update. So we have finished our first round of green communities projects in Hingham. This, this is a state-run program through the Department of Energy Resources. And the state mandated goal of the green communities program is to reduce municipal energy use by at least twenty percent over five years. So with our initial designation grant funds of about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, we were able to complete three projects. Two of those projects involved installing variable frequency drives, VFDs, and new motors at both the South Elementary School and the Broadcove Sewer Pumping Station. So those should reduce electricity use and costs at both of those facilities. And then the third project was, it involved enhancing the energy management system at Hingham High School to include demand control ventilation for the building's common areas. And that should allow for more efficient indoor temperature control at the high school. We're working to close out these projects with the state over the next month so that we can apply for the next Green Communities Competitive Grant Round this fall. And I just wanted to thank the school department, DPW, and the Energy Action Committee for working with us on this and and helping to make the Green Communities Program successful thus far. Thank you.
And Michelle, just picking up on the comments you heard from Bill and Liz, part of being green is to make sure as we, as we consider ongoing contracts and new purchases that we are in fact mindful of the environmental effects and that we take that into account when we solicit bids and ultimately accept those bids.
Absolutely.
That will be an ongoing mission for this board and really for the town at large.
And I think we can look at that more closely through this year's capital process as we're looking at different vehicles and other pieces of equipment to replace. I know the technology is changing pretty rapidly and, you know, we started this year with some hybrid police cruisers, so we can see what other options for other types of vehicles and equipment are out there.
Yes. Anything else, Michelle?
No, that's it. And Tom, I heard from Tom. He looks forward to coming back next week.
Did you send pictures?
Not yet, but he went to Yosemite or Yellowstone and all these places and had a blast. And now he's in Massachusetts.
Liz Klein, any, any report you'd like to make this evening?
Just an announcement slash reminder, the downtown sidewalk sales are this week, so Thursday, the twenty-ninth through Saturday, the thirty-first.
And what's the weather forecast?
I have no.
Are we going to get more rain?
Perfect and sunny, sure. Perfect shopping weather.
Excellent, great. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
Just want to thank Michelle for holding down the fort in Tom's absence. Thanks for all you're doing, Michelle. I know you're doing double duty there, so thank you.
Great.
No problem. Thank you.
I've got two items I wanted to report on. First, with respect to the schools, Dr. Gary Mestus, who served as superintendent of Plymouth Public Schools from two thousand and eight until September, twenty twenty, was named the interim superintendent for the Hingham Public Schools in a unanimous vote by the school committee last night. So congratulations to the school committee and to our new interim superintendent. Look forward to working with him. And next is just a sports-related item. It was an exciting moment in professional sports. Last week, the National Hockey League conducted their player draft and a Hingham resident, Matthew Beniers, who attends the University of Michigan, was the number two pick in the entire NHL draft. He was selected by the Seattle Kraken. So congratulations to Hingham resident Matty and his entire family. And I'd like to actually send a letter on behalf of the board, a letter of congratulations to his family for this, if everyone is okay with that.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So it was, it was broadcast on national TV. This was, this was a really big deal for the family and really for the town of Hingham. And I've got nothing else on the agenda. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. We are adjourned. Good to see you all.